Study session to discuss the first draft of our LCAP, or Local Control Accountability Plan. And are you up first, Mr. Fine?
All right, thank you. I'm just gonna let you take it away. And we'll review. We should have all gotten a copy of the LCAP over the weekend, and the intent was for us to review and dive in with comments today from Mr. Fine prior to it going out to public review. Correct, Mr. Fine?
Correct.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Lockdosen, members of the board, and welcome home, Mr. Hunt. Thank you again for setting some time aside for the Local Control and Accountability Plan process. And as I shared with you over the weekend in sending you a draft, the intent today really is, this is your time, I spend just a few minutes talking about the format of what's before you, because it is different format than the last time. Hopefully, a little bit more readable. At the same time, we'll continue to remind you, this is not the required format. This is our internal format that we're using through the development process, because frankly, we think the state's template is less than conducive to process and to understanding. And so, we will ultimately convert it to the state template, but at the end of the process for submission, as opposed to during the process. But before I start, just do wanna mention, we gave you paper copies this evening. With the exception of a couple minor typos, they are exactly what we sent you over the weekend. It's just printed on a little larger paper for you, make it a little easier. And we did update the date, which is part of our document control process. So even when we change a colon here, a comma there, or a couple other things, we update the date. So it does have today's date on it, as opposed to Saturday's date, but there is no substantive changes, just a couple minor things that we saw yesterday and this morning. That would be the same with regard to the budget planning, single page, no difference in data there, other than we did date it. Saturday's version just didn't have a date on it. So we wanna make sure that it's aligned, so that as we progress now through the month of May and see different versions of this, that you can keep all the pieces together. And before I really get into it, want to actually start with, kind of, May is LCAP review month, which is really consistent with the calendar that we set way back in November with respect to this process. We start that tonight, kind of officially, with one more opportunity for you to weigh in before we start the month-long conversation with the community. Remember our process chart, that if you go right down the center of that process chart, everything to the right is required by the law, and everything to the left, was what we thought were value-added activities that we added to the process. So we've concluded through, up through the middle, and actually are moving now across the right side of the chart, and that is with the state-required steps. So we've drafted an LCAP plan. You have that draft. The state always envisioned that it would be a rough draft, that we would then take to the community and to our stakeholders to get feedback. We're starting that with you. We continue that tomorrow night with our first parent advisory group, which is the CDAC, the Compulsory Education District Advisory Committee. Continue that on Wednesday with a, kind of, a first-ever joint meeting between the leadership of RCTA, CSCE, and our administrators group, coming together and hearing a presentation on LCAP, and then being able to weigh into that. And we'll continue that process over the course of the month. Next week, and you have these flyers, I think, at your settings, plus they're in the back, both in English and Spanish. Next week, we start actually some community review forums, two of those, and online, opportunities for folks to comment online. None of those are required, again, but those are consistent with our engagement, outreach and engagement process that we started with, and we wanna continue that theme of having our community have an engagement. So, all that really to say, there's nothing about this version today, other than it's another refinement in the process. There's nothing complete about it, or perfect about it, per se. It does have a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in it, probably more sweat and tears than blood. But it has a lot of effort into it, and a lot of listening, number one, to each other, number two, certainly to your comments that you gave us back on the 21st, and going back and rechecking to source documents, which include really the 1,600 or so comments that we heard from our stakeholders in this process, to kind of recheck and say, are we still on the right page, or we're trying to address X? Have we talked about it so much that we're no longer solving for X, we're now solving for Y? To go back and kind of rebase line and make sure we didn't get way off. And so there's been a lot of that, and that really is the process that will continue here in the month of May, as we continue to work through it. So with that introduction, let me take just a moment to introduce you to the new formats this evening, and then the rest of the time is yours. The first is what's up, actually up on the screen and at your place setting, is our, if you will, May version of our single-page infographic that highlights the seven needs, in no particular order, but then shows that mapping that you've become very familiar with, on how we map those back to the eight state priority areas. And so, certainly as the plan evolves and gets refined, it may need to obviously refine the infographic as well, but give you some sense of the work we've started, as part of our communications plan. The second thing to highlight for you would be the one-page budget summary. So this lists each of the seven needs and lists goals A through N, and gives you an idea of the dollars being allocated in the LCF, from LCFF funding, from other funding, for a total. So there is roughly $33 million worth of increased services, and increased and improved services to kids. In this version of the LCAP, 17.3 of those come from LCFF funding, and another 15.5 from other sources of funds. But really, to the top of the page, that single page, gives you a sense of what we are currently projecting that we're going to get from the state next year, from an incremental increase, which is what would be available to dedicate towards the items that are in this plan. And you can see that we're expecting to get about $33 million. Eight, $15 million of that 33 is really already spoken for, from a standpoint that we've already made those commitments. We made those back in November, and in January, and February with our employees, leaving roughly $18 million of LCFF funding. And we are leveraging that $18 million, basically spending it all on this plan, plus leveraging another 15 and 1/2 million of other funds, to bring about the priorities that are identified in the plan. And just so you have a sense, total impacts with respect to personnel that are in the plan, and I think this is not only important for you to understand, but ultimately for our community to understand, because as I have learned over the course of several months here, economic development is all of our responsibilities. It's not just left to one office at City Hall, or the county, or what have you. But this includes 103 new teaching FTEs, 50 new classified FTEs, 12 new management FTEs, and one supervisor FTE. And so you start to see the kind of dollar impact that we'd be making in our community with respect to employment as well, all with the goal of improving and increasing services to kids. So real quickly, to give you the format, the first two pages are highlights, and they specifically are highlights relative to year one. What are we talking about doing immediately? Because as you know, we have a number of elements in the plan where we say, we need to meet the need, but we need to do some planning with respect to that need. And so we devote time next year to that planning, with implementation in year two. Number one, it does two things for us. One, it certainly gives us the time, and we've allocated resources who are necessary to do good planning. But the second is, this is a three-year plan, and we don't have all the resources in year one. They will grow over the course of the next eight years, would be the state's plan with regard to the resources. And so, having is simply impossible to, number one, we don't have the capacity to do everything in year one, but we also don't have the funding to do everything in year one. And so, planning to implement is a perfectly acceptable approach here, on how we kind of spread out the needs. So the highlight, the first two pages are highlights, and they are organized by need, but then they focus on year one.
Sorry, we have a question.
Oh.
Do you wanna ask now, Mrs. Oliver, or do you have to wait?
Go ahead and finish. Let me ask it as soon as he's-
All right. So, Mr. Fine, can you please just call him, Mrs. Oliver, when you're done?
Happy to. It also serves as a table of contents for you, so when you're looking at a particular need, you know what page to turn to. If you turn to page three, is the first need, and each need starts with a, kind of, a cover sheet. In fact, we label it as a cover sheet. And that identifies the metrics that we would be using in year one, two, and three, to measure our success relative to the work we're doing. And in not, try that again, not in all cases do we have a metric, a baseline metric to start from. So year one, if we're going to implement something, would become the baseline year, and then we begin measuring after that. So, some of these goals, some of the actions that we're proposing to take, we don't have current baseline information for. We would have to start that data collection process, which is why you don't see numbers in all categories. The state requires us to identify research that supports the action that we're going to take. And then we've also must map everything we talk about, just as we've been doing all along, back to the state priorities. And we've also chosen to map those back to local priorities, very specifically your existing goals, and any existing plans of those 15 plans we reviewed with you in February. If they're, if an action item in here is related to that, we map it back to that as well. Page two of each need then starts with the goals. The goals are lettered, A through N. There is context provided where we felt that was needed. That is our own local, that you won't see that in the final template, because the state doesn't ask for context, and doesn't make a, doesn't provide a way to insert context in the final template. But we think it's important for readability and understandability, what's the context that we're coming from when we talk about a particular goal. We must identify the people served, the schools affected, LEA is Local Education Agency. And so where you see LEA-wide, that would be school district-wide. And then you see, for each action, we describe the action in year one, and the expenditures related to carry that out in year one. Then we move across the page in year two and three. In the original version of this that we gave you, year one, started with year one, and then you had to progress through the pages to see year two and year three. And that is actually consistent with the state template, which is part of the, doesn't flow real well. We've put them side by side, and we think that enhances readability. And then at the conclusion, the last page of each need is a summary of year one dollars, year two dollars, and year three dollars. And probably the next time you see this, we'll include the full-time equivalent counts in there as well, that total up to the numbers I just gave you. So I wanna make sure you understand the format. Every element in this template is required by the state, except for context. Context is the one element that we added. Everything else actually is driven by the state template. We've just organized it a slightly different for our process. But I wanna ensure that you understand the format, and then certainly prepared to take any questions and input that you have.
Thank you. First of all, I love the infographic. Thank you. That's very nice. My first question, I have actually three questions. I hope you guys will bear with me. First of all, you've gone through this and verified that those 20 top public comments from the list that we were given are all reflected?
So we have gone back and reviewed that a number of times. It's actually 30 topics that we got from our stakeholders. But remember that that is not the only source of information that went into here. Your own comments to us were a major driver of what went in here. The 15 existing plans that you've adopted at some point over the last several years were a source of information. Professional judgment of the folks that helped draft this, as instructional leaders in the district, certainly, and then the expert, two other things, the expert panels that we brought here, that spoke to you in February, took notes from them. And the last would be the baseline data. So where we are clearly not performing where we wanna be in a given area, we had some focus to that, because that's an area we would clearly need to improve and begin to close that gap.
Okay.
Have we actually checked off all 30 areas?
I just wondered if it had been-
We have reviewed all 30 areas multiple times, Mrs. Oliver, in this final draft. I don't know that, over the weekend, we actually went back and double-checked. But my caution would be that I don't think it was ever our intent that we would address all 30. I would say we came pretty darn close to touching on them in some way or another. Some of them, though, maybe planned something for implementation later.
Obviously, I suppose not all 30 could be addressed in the completeness, but I just wondered if you had. The second question I have is, when you take this out to the public, are you gonna be giving them this 40-page plan? Because this is ponderous at best. And how is the public going to start ciphering through this?
So we, I'm holding my hand, the first draft. We have to be done with it in the next few hours, because we'll be using it tomorrow. And pieces of it are already in translation, so we know there are pieces of it I can't touch yet, otherwise I'm gonna cause our translators to go completely nuts. But as an example, there are several pages that talk about process. It's our intent to go through that fairly quickly, but to have them as a resource. So there's 24 slides here. And what we do is, an example, using the infographic. So I just happen to open to Healthy and Ready to Learn. There's our Healthy and Ready to Learn infographic symbol, what the need is, and that particular item only has one goal. So there's the goal stated. The second page, pull right from the two-page highlights.
Okay.
And here are the highlights in year one, and here are how these actions and services will support kids. So as simple as that on a slide is how we intend to cover it.
Good. That's my question, just to simplify the plan into a very-
This document will be available to them. It's actually already online. It will be available for those that wanna get into the nitty-gritty. But we understood very clearly that we would only have about a half hour to review the document. So we've got basically a minute per slide, roughly. And then we are giving an hour for comments. So the same format we followed with regard to the January community input, a half hour of background and kind of getting ready, and then an hour of comment. We're following that exact same format.
Okay. My last question, and I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, the young lady who came down from Sacramento to speak to us on the-
Janelle Kubinek.
Okay, Kubinek. She quite, several times mentioned that she foresaw the LCAP being a very short four, five-page document. And I wondered what that was supposed to reflect, because I don't see a four or five-page document.
So we haven't seen a four or five-page document in any of the drafts we've seen out there that are now starting to show up online, as districts are kind of in that same spot we are. Number one, the template is not conducive to it being that short, really, because we're fitting, we're fitting a lot of words into columns. And so just by the nature of that, it extends the pages. That's number one. Number two is the most important element of this plan, that it's locally-minded. And we wanted to take a balance of detail and summary. And this ultimately is not only, in its final form, obviously, the plan that you will be adopting, but it's the plan the next day we're going to hand to staff to go implement. So there has to be some level of detail of our thinking, so that we're not revisiting every topic every time it comes up, to say, well, I need an explanation or an interpretation of what this means. How to have some level of detail in it. And so that certainly has added some lines. We've seen some that are 100 and some pages long, and we have seen some that are just a few pages, and have absolutely no depth to them at all. And we were trying to strike a balance here. I don't think Janelle would be disappointed in this. I've already expressed to her, the template that she helped architect doesn't create, doesn't work well, and that we think we have a much better template, she'd like to adopt, the state would like to adopt it for next year. And I've shared that with state board staff as well. In fact, they said, when the process is over, come, let's sit down and talk about what doesn't work. So it's a fine balance.
Okay. I just wondered if there was something we were missing.
I think the key is that it be locally-minded. And I think what we tried to do was strike a balance that was appropriate for Riverside, with the level of detail.
Okay.
We do, and I think Janelle would be very pleased with this, don't wanna put words in her mouth. We only have seven needs identified, although they're very broad, and we only have goals A through N, which are relatively, I mean, more goals than probably what we would like, at the same time, pretty balanced compared to the depth of the needs that are here, that are represented here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver. Mr. Hunt has a few questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Lockdosen. Mr. Fine, help me out on just taking me through the process. Goals A and B, increase the quality and rigor of core curriculum and instruction. B, increase the percentage of students who meet the standards when provided with grade-level core instructional programs. To present and defend, it is our intention that we're going to begin to meet and implement these goals by hiring the three full-time elementary assistant principals. What is the work product, then, that they are producing that goes back to that elevating those goals?
Well, I would actually have to say that the real key to those goals, Mr. Hunt, isn't those assistant principals. It's the fidelity at which we implement the core curriculum, the core, the new state standards with respect to the core curriculum. It is, and not just the curriculum, but its instruction as well. It's the fidelity at which our teachers do that. It's also the fidelity that we implement and carry forward the work that's already been started over the last several years, in instruction with respect to the multi-tier systems of support. So that is really our intervention model. Our response to intervention is a term that we frequently use, but it has to do with ultimately the ideal pyramid. And we talked, and I realize you weren't here at the last meeting, but we actually showed a graphic of the ideal pyramid, where roughly 80% of our kids are proficient as a result of having the core curriculum delivered to them in the course of the day, on a normal basis. And that roughly 10 to 15% are proficient after that, but with some type of in-class intervention, to help them where they've struggled. And that a relatively small amount, the tier at the top of the pyramid, requires some more intensive intervention. And today, we don't have that perfectly shaped pyramid. It's just a very awkward shape, because we don't, we're not at 80% with regard to that group of kids. We, that top tier that we're spending a lot of time and energy on with regard to intensive intervention is much greater than we would like. So the real, if I can say this, the real key here, a measurement of success, is that we get ourselves to that ideal pyramid with respect to the performance of our kids. What we know from a lot of input we got, parents, teachers, administrators, was that the model that we have today, which was a budget-cutting model of support at our elementary schools, with the half-time APs that are shared between sites, does not work. And so, this first step is to take three, what amounts to currently three APs that are shared over six schools, and make those three full-time at three of the schools, and hire three more for the other three, so that we return to our longstanding model of a full-time AP for a site that is not split. The splitting, the multi-assignment is not optimal under any circumstances. And so that's the first step of this. By doing that, we are providing support to teachers, we're providing support to the school. These are generally larger schools that we're talking about, and schools with higher level of need. So maybe a higher concentration of English learners, higher concentration of children in poverty, higher concentration of foster youth, or a higher concentration of special ed kids is the other variable in here, all of which consume a great deal of time. If our principals, if our instructional leaders at the sites, our principals and APs don't have enough support, that they can be in the classroom with our teachers, interacting and supporting them, then we're not going to accomplish the change in the pyramid. So it is a small step towards riding that support structure at the schools.
I don't disagree with you, Mike, at all. I mean, and I support having those APs. But it seems to me, we're, just in my view, that it looks like we're trying to say, we're gonna solve goal A and B by this $400,000 expenditure. And it looks, let these principals are supposed to be doing something more than what I think you have them imagining to do. They don't have any special duties tied to the common core, then.
All of our site administrators have specific duties tied to it.
They don't have any extra special duties, then, tied to the overall district's common core objectives, 'cause your goal is to the overall district, isn't it?
Well, no, our, well, there's a goal here, specifically to this one, with respect to all students, and then with respect to closing the gap with our disadvantaged students. And so where we're providing that extra support is at schools with those higher concentrations of not just the state's definition of disadvantage, but we would add to that special education, where we have high concentrations of special education programs at the schools that are very time-consuming, that take our single administrators, their support staff, and their teachers away from, whether it's in an IEP, and all of which are part of their duties, but take them out of the focus of the classroom. So-
I'm gonna continue to listen. I don't, I don't see the connection at this point. I understand it's needed, but I don't see the, it looks to me to be more of a reasoning to put these people back, those jobs back into our system. I don't see that they're tied specifically to those goals.
So, and just to put it in perspective, it's three of, I believe, nine that we cut. So we certainly are not restoring. Those three administrators, assistant principals at elementary schools, are in addition to roughly 19 teachers in one category, another 17 teachers in another category, all that are related to this goal. So actually, we're adding almost, if I recall correctly, almost 60, 65 teachers in this one goal as well.
With apologies to you and my peers, that I wasn't at the last special session that you had when I was out of town, I just don't quite see the connection. I understand the need, I understand the pain and suffering that the staff's gone through, and the deprivation of the quality of delivery of education without these kind of people. I'm just not looking for it to be an excuse to add people back in by lofty goals. And without some sort of connection that I can defend, when I run into Mark Hawkins, or some other interested citizen out there who will ask me. So I just wanna keep learning on that, if you would.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Came up like that as well. So, Mrs. Cloud has a question or two. Mrs. Cloud has a question or two.
I do. First of all, on the first page, no, not the first page, I take that back. On the second page, we're looking at the dual-language immersion for starting pre-K. And I believe that's on the instruction subcommittee agenda next week because Mrs. LaFosse and Mrs. Alvey have some questions about that. So I'm hoping that it's on the agenda and we're going to be looking at that. I have a comment, it was about research. Okay. I'm looking, I was looking at this and looking at building up our programs again, and I suppose I have a little bit different approach than Mr. Hunt. And maybe what my concerns is maybe will mirror yours or not, I don't know. But one of the things that I've seen is that principals have really been stressed, I mean, everybody's been stressed, I get that, but having to do so much and to be an instructional leader, and that's really been our goal in the last few iterations of change, is that the principal is the instructional leader. Well, with all the things that go on at the site, that usually doesn't happen because you're putting out fires constantly and so you're not able to go into the classrooms and to get the kind of programs for their teachers and really see what's going on, especially if you have a larger school. So I am happy to see some of the site buildup, and I think I mentioned that before, with counselors and specialists and all of that, because that's where the action happens, is on the site. And I know that many of these schools need APs to take care of the discipline and some of the other things that come up on a daily basis that principals are then focused on and they can't be focused on the classroom. I hear time and time again, I want to get in the classroom and see what's going on, but my telephone keeps ringing and, and you know, we've talked about the kinds of behavior issues that have come up at some of our schools. And to see some of the counselors and the behavior, I forget some of the titles of some of the, I was looking through it.
Intensive behavior intervention.
Behavior interventionists and some of that. And I think, and to go back and do our due diligence with special ed, not that we haven't been doing it, but I know site people sometimes get frustrated when they can't easily contact some of our special ed people because, you know, they're doing two jobs and we cut way back in special ed and way back in pupil services and way back in business. And I think it's time to rebuild some of that up so we can serve our sites. And I have, I mean, I can, you know, easily say why we need that because all of those things, the kids that misbehave and the principal that doesn't get in the classroom affects the students of which our primary goal is to teach them to read and do math and all of that. So I just want to say I appreciate the fact that I can see that we're building that up again. And then my last comment is a question, you know, I'm a little confused, I think I get it, but this is kind of the template, the one-page sheet for the rest of this so we know what the brown is and all, is that what that is? Because it is a little confusing, all these papers, and if you could get the board.
We're talking about the first two pages?
I'm talking about this page.
All this is, is a summary of the financial data that's on these pages.
Okay.
Just a one-page summary so that you can see the financial impact really quickly at a glance.
Okay. So it's a, and then the brown is, all of the brown highlights is the...
They're just headings.
The headings of what we're doing. And I just want to say, really, it is kind of confusing, so if you can get some of that to the board, the simplified version, it would help. Because this, even though we need to know the information, if I'm looking and try to present it to somebody in succinct form, I couldn't.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding you. So what you're really saying is the same thing we're going to use with the community, yes. As soon as we finish this tonight, which is a task after the board meeting, then we will have it for you tomorrow.
Not to impugn my fellow colleague's intelligence or maybe mine, I could impugn mine, but this is just complicated.
It has the exact same information on it as the first two pages.
It was sent to us as two separate documents too. Do you remember that?
Yeah, yeah.
It was emailed to us where we had a budget sheet and we also had the...
The budget sheet was, but now I'm talking about the two highlight documents.
Oh, okay.
What's in the PowerPoint is just a slide version of really these two pages.
Well, it's, yeah, and I know that the community, the paperwork you're doing is kind of an overview of everything and that's kind of what I would appreciate. And the final question is, help me understand page 13.
13.
That was the one I think I emailed you.
All our UST students need to graduate high school prepared for college.
Yeah, but I don't understand the column. What are the percentages?
So in year one, so go to the left is the metric that we'll be using because we have to identify metrics. Some of these metrics are identified to us by the state that are required, some of we have created. So our current baseline information for academic year dropout rates is 3%.
Okay, so we want to reduce...
In year one, we intend to change that to 2.6 because now this is dropout, so we want it to be going down, not up. It's different than student performance. And so a downward trend would be a good trend here. In year two, dropping to 2.2%, in year three to 2%. So over the course of the three years, we'd be dropping that dropout rate by 1%. The graduation rate, which is not quite the inverse, because remember, we're dealing with the state's definition of these. It's, I mean, most of us think of a graduation rate and what isn't represented there is the dropout rate, right? I think you all know very clearly that those, you can't add those two things together. The state defines them different and so on.
Okay, well then...
But the graduation rate, though, is going up. So we have 85.3 now and it's growing in each of the years.
But that's part of my question. I'm not connecting the dots there when our dropout rate is so low in our graduation rates and that doesn't add up. And I know they're different, so that's...
They won't add up because these are, these are state-defined
Yes.
...metrics and there are different calculations for the dropout rate versus the graduation rate. So that's what I was just alluding to. In our mind, we have a graduation rate and whatever it falls short of 100% is probably the dropout rate, but they're both independent calculations done over, now over a cohort of years. So you have to look at your freshmen. So dropout is going to look at freshmen versus seniors four years later. And there are lots of reasons that go into that.
So dropout rate and graduation rate do not equal 100%?
No.
To add to...
They're completely different calculations.
Well, help me understand how I can ever explain that to somebody who's asking me, you know, how, I say, well, that doesn't make sense because it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, it doesn't make sense probably to any of us except to Daniel Patterson, but what I would focus on is the two of them independently because that is really the state's vision. They are independent calculations. So if you want to talk about graduation rates, we're at 85.3 and we believe this plan will allow us, support and facilitate us growing to a graduation rate of 90.1 in three years.
So if we had zero dropout in year three or year four, say we had zero and we had a 92% graduation rate, how does that make sense?
Daniel, it's all yours.
Actually, you know, I'll have Daniel come up and explain it, I suppose myself, because he deals with this every day and the 10,000 nuances that are embedded in these calculations. One is a cohort and...
And just one quick one while you're coming up is the baseline. Is that going to be established? Is that this year? That's the last question.
The baseline is the data we gave you back in early March, it was in the pocket of notebooks we gave you.
Yeah.
That's all current, well, it would have been...
For all the other...
Predominantly at the end of last year, right? However, not all these metrics are updated just once a year. For example, the graduation dropout just was released last week.
So the AP and the AG and all of that, that's the baseline data from then? Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, help me.
In two weeks, we'll have a presentation on graduation and dropout rates. For this iteration, the metric that we chose were two different metrics. For the cohort rate, there are actually three calculations that go along with that that do add up to 100%. There's three outcomes for students using the four-year cohort rate. They either graduate in four years, they drop out within those four years, or they're still enrolled. If you take each of those rates, they would add up to 100%. Now, the metric that we included in this isn't that same dropout rate for the cohort rate. This is what we call our academic dropout rate. So this is the calculation of any student that's in ninth through 12th grade that would drop out in one academic year. So it's the number of dropouts that we have divided by the total nine through 12th grade enrollment. And in terms of an intervention, that's a group that's easier to target because there are actively enrolled students, which is why we chose that metric. The cohort rate includes students that dropped out their freshman year four years ago. And those students are, you know, could still be enrolled at a school later, but that's why we chose that metric to deal with dropout. We could include both of those, but that's why we chose the two in this case.
Well, you do realize it's confusing.
Yes, it is.
Including both kinds of dropout rates would be even more confusing. As Daniel said, our focus here was on the one and we thought we could make a difference with, which are those immediate dropouts. Just dropped out, we can still go get to them tomorrow as opposed to ones that dropped out pretty good.
Okay, I'm just wondering how I could explain it to my business neighbor when he's talking about your dropout rate is so high. I'm looking at this, I'm going, let me call Daniel.
Here's Daniel.
Daniel needs to get us a little, a one-pager bullet point. You have another question from Mr. Lee.
Several questions are detailed, so I don't know if it's appropriate for this workshop, but I do have just some comments about the process in general. I think the process started out how we all envisioned, you know, collaboration, getting people to the table, listening to the community, see what they wanted. And I think from that point, there was a gap. I don't know how that gap developed, but I think it did. And I, after I got the first draft, I realized only a certain amount of time was devoted to creating that plan, just based on time alone. So I wanted to see how that process, how the draft, what process was used to create the draft that we saw and what draft, what the process was using to change the draft that we saw for the second period. So I sat in on a meeting, as you know, and I saw lots of people working really hard, collaboratively, trying to put together a great draft for us to review. Then I was thinking that I didn't see anybody else. All I saw were principals, administrators, who all I know are highly skilled and have lots of experience. But I think we're missing a big part of the community that was supposed to develop this locally-minded plan. So I look at this draft again and while I see a much better plan, I don't have any point of, I don't have any point of reference to see if it's a good plan or not. I don't know what parents think about it, I know what teachers think about it, I don't know what the LCAP committee thinks about it. I realize they're going to get to review the plan, but that's going to be, I think, when, starting this week. And so then we only have 30 days to really take their feedback and recreate it. I think the process would have been much more cohesive and congruent if we had those members involved in the authoring process so things didn't get lost in translation. And I say that too because I even see some of the comments that I made asking for options. You know, I see this budget plan, which is one of the things that I asked for, which is great, and I know what we can work with. But I also wanted to see the choices. We had dozens of options that the community gave us. And I realize a lot of those are incorporated in here and I also realize we can't do everything. But I don't even know what we can do because I don't see any alternatives. I just see one plan and, like Grant said, it seems like a good plan, but I don't know if it's a good plan. Do you see what I'm saying? I don't have any other options, you know? And then, and I look at the subcategories of where we're spending money and at the meetings that I went to and the people that I talked to, I heard concerns about preschool. And I see preschools addressed here, but we're only spending $135,000 on preschool. I also see CTE being addressed here, which I think is important. But again, I only see $200,000 being spent here. So those are my concerns. I realize that the community's not going to say we need more APs when we need APs. I think we need APs. But I think the community had made a lot of good points about things that we need that are not addressed in this plan or that are underfunded in this plan. And I think those things could have been addressed before presenting our second draft if we had those input providers at those authoring sessions.
So just a couple of comments. Number one is our teachers, to an extent, absolutely participated in the writing. The room wasn't all administrators. I think even the session you sat in, there was a teacher sitting in front of you. And so they were, their voice was part of that development. With respect to the two examples you gave, number one, we don't have the ability to expand preschool rapidly simply because we don't have the facilities. It's part of our challenge that we're going to have to face. We are required by law to begin to decrease our primary grade class size. At the same time, we want to do some other things and they, those priorities are simply colliding in the limited number of classroom spaces that we have. And so we clearly gave priority to what the law called for because we don't get a choice in that regard. With respect to preschool, we, again, part of this is balance. So we are trying to balance moving forward what, with the resource we have and in this particular case, with classroom space that we have at those grade levels. It will take us several years to build up the classroom space to ultimately accomplish that type of program. The other thing with respect to, and this gets a little confusing and I know it does, the career technical ed, the district has a, has two grants pending with the state that we won't hear about until the end of May. What's in here in some respects is a placeholder, should we not get those grants? But if we get those grants, we would actually probably come back to and remove what's in here and replace it with those grants, which actually have six new path, six, six, right? Six and one, that's right. So have seven new pathways in them as opposed to just two. The timing of that grant is just, is such that we couldn't put it in here because we don't know. But by the time we get to the final, we will know. And so it, that's a confusing element. I think we will, if we receive those, either of those grants, you'll see a much different impact on CTE. But again, in year one, there's no way on our own to go and expand CTE more than probably what we put in here. There's just simply, we would be completely out of balance with respect to every other need that we have. So I understand your concern about process.
What do you mean out of balance?
We would, six new pathways, the one grant is six...
What if we don't get the grant?
600. That's worth about 15 million, but not all of that's ours, obviously. The other one's about 600? If we don't get those grants, then this would be what we would move forward with. Though we're very comfortable with regard to being balanced compared to preschool, compared to counseling, compared to school plus two, and compared with the number one item here, which is the instructional program.
I see if we get the grant, how we'd be out of balance, but if we don't get the grant, I think we're still not out of balance, but in the wrong way. We're still creating only two pathways and that's not until year three and we're still only spending $200,000. And I think 80% of that is staff. So if we don't get the grant, what do we do? Then we backfill those pathways or we're just going to follow this plan?
No, we would follow this plan. Notice that we didn't identify which pathways in here we would include. We would include probably some of the, one, two of the pathways we've submitted grants for. Because we've already given some thought to how they can fit in and at what schools, so we wouldn't start that planning effort over. We've already devoted many months to that planning effort.
I still think that if that grant doesn't come through, that CTE is underfunded. And I understand what you're telling me about space for preschool, but if that's a priority, then we've got to find space somewhere or we have to develop a plan so that when we do get space, we can create those programs.
So...
I just feel like we're, now, based on your questions, unfortunately, it raises more concerns. It's like, well, we don't have the, we can't spend the money how we want, so we're going to spend it a different way because we have to spend it.
Mr. Lee, this board can change anything that's in here. If you want all of the money to go to CTE and preschool, but that's what this is about.
But that's not what I'm saying. And I don't think, and I hope someone agrees with me on the board, we're not getting what we're asking. We asked for options and we're not getting options. This plan might be great, like I said. This plan might be great, like I said. And I think if we instituted this plan, if we voted on a board today, then our students would be better off tomorrow, no question. But my question, I feel like my job is, what can we do that's best for the students? And that's what our job is, is to ask questions and to ask them constructively. I'm not trying to be critical of the work that was done. I think, I know that everybody's intentions are good. But I think from an outsider's perspective, a non educator's perspective, a community perspective, a parent who has two kids, these are the questions that I'm asking, and I would imagine other parents are going to be asking too.
And that's exactly what we're hoping will come out this month if we've missed the marks in place. That's what the review process is about, is to say, "We missed the mark."
Quite frankly, I think I made my opinions quite clear. And if my thoughts aren't going to be incorporated in a draft, what makes a parent think their thoughts are going to be incorporated in a draft?
Okay, Mr. Lee, I apologize, because I don't remember with respect to wanting to fully implement a large new CTE program as being...
CTE is just one example.
Okay.
I'm talking about options in general. And after the meeting, I sent an email.
Yes.
And I tried to give an example of what it is that we're looking for, to provide options so we can determine how to prioritize dollars and find best value based on what constraints we have. And that wasn't done. I mean, I don't know why, I don't know if I was not clear, or if I'm off base, or, and if I am, if you're, I want you to tell, I want you to be candid with me and say, Brent, that's not what this is about. This is, and let me tell you why. But I didn't get that. I said, okay, you told me, okay, we will provide you those options. And I don't see it. And I'm not trying to attack you either, I'm sorry if it feels that way, but I raised concerns, and then I hear your answer, and I feel like my concerns aren't being addressed.
So we may have missed a point someplace. We took your email, we absolutely went through it. I don't think we understood we were to come back with, under preschool, here's an option A, B, C, D, and E. We discussed multiple options in our conversations, in weeks of conversations, actually, and then ultimately put in the draft plan and option. We certainly went back and looked at everything that you indicated and weighed those, and weighed those. I don't know that there's anything in here that we didn't discuss multiple approaches and multiple options. But completely misunderstood that you wanted to see options A through Z for every item presented here. We narrowed it down to what we thought was the best option to meet that need through our discussion, through the process.
I think what I was understanding too, and I'm in agreement with you, Brent, and Mr. Fine can remember, my first year on the board, I was always asking for options too. I think we kind of got two different things. We've got a planning process where the options were already discussed, and then they were put into this like, well, this is what we could do in those realm of options. But I think what you're looking for as a decision maker is to have that at your table now, once we've gone through this process. And so I think it's almost like two separate things. I mean, the plan is within the realm of possibilities that's to adhere to and comply with a state requirement. But then we also, as decision makers, need a different tool. We need a different element to be able to say, you know, you're essentially saying, here's the pot of money, this is how much we think we're going to get, and this is how, everything we've heard fits into that. And what Mr. Lee is saying is, maybe we wanted to make some more decisions about that us up here.
And we can absolutely do that.
And so I think maybe the, it, the burden is on the board then to go through and say this, this doesn't, you know, the things that you've gone through, that's a big burden, I know, to look through and say, what is working and what isn't. I know the one thing that I would have liked to have seen that I, and I know you guys have done a good job on this for the most part, but I think it's kind of getting at what Mr. Lee was saying too. Because it came out, these things from a business perspective, is an org chart of who's implementing what and, you know, that's always something I want to say, like what departments within the district are in charge of doing what? I mean, I think the assumption is there that you know what that is, but somebody from the outside may not know that. I think it's a little difficult sometimes when you need, who am I supposed to talk to about this issue, because you don't know. So, I mean, you do have the FTEs identified, but I think an org chart identifying where those positions would be going, would be helpful. And I'm not saying get it tomorrow, I'm just saying it would be helpful. I think you know it so well, it comes naturally to you.
I don't think we, in our process, we didn't discuss that type of thing. It was a matter of more focus on what the draft service was to the student or to the family. In most cases, it fits right into the organization we have. We weren't creating new elements of the organization. There are two exceptions to that. The first one is, we believe to better support the behavioral health focus that we have, that we need to go back and recreate our pupil services as a standalone department, having given it any more thought of where it would report to, but that we would separate it out from special ed like it was for 100 years, and to help bring a focus to it. And we included a director to do that.
So that would be helpful for me to see, like, just...
Never discussed where they would report in the organization.
Yeah, is that going to be under Mr. Walker, is it going to be, you know, I just, it's my own organizational brain, I like to see things.
And we could do any number of things with it, that's what I'm saying. We didn't take it further than that. We said, in order to do X, we're going, and to bring a focus to X, we're going to need some type of support structure around it. So we created the provisions for the support structure, but didn't necessarily have it, never discussed where it would report. The second exception, everything else fits into existing pieces. So our teachers fit in at schools. The support for the multi-tier system of support fits into our instruction department where it already is, and those things. The second exception, other than the pupil services, is the community, the parent and community partnership. And we, again, provided for a position to lead that effort, but have not, in this document, have not described where organizationally it would fall.
Okay. So we have a couple more questions before we go into closed session. Mrs. Cloud.
Just real quick, I have a little bit of a different take on it, because I understand it's kind of an unwieldy process, and we got a lot of input. And then we sent it back with the kinds of decisions that we kind of wanted made, and I see this as kind of falling into that. I mean, it is unwieldy. I would hesitate as a board member to say, well, we don't need a parent engagement person, we need this and that, because I'm not on the front lines. And I think, as I'm looking at this, I can see that there was input from, for instance, I'm in the early childhood committee. I know that the funding resource depends, that we get for Head Start and California, you know, preschool comes from the state. So we would be hard pressed to go ahead without the funding, you know, so those kinds of things is what staff really understand that I don't understand as well. I, you know, we're kind of the big picture, so I wouldn't want to, you know, item by item, go back and say, well, that's not what we meant, when I don't really have any idea what is meant on the field. That's the decisions, I think, that you need to make after hearing the process. And so I'm, I do think that it probably could have been a little, as you said, kind of a chart to see how that breaks down. But I looked in here, and I see counseling, that was a big, big issue, in how we've looked at that, and special ed, and the needs in special ed and all of that. Those were issues that came up and that we're looking at. And to make the kinds of changes we do, it is people, you know? So I'm, you know, I'm comfortable with it, I get it, and I don't want to have to go line by line and make a decision about whether that's something we need, because you would better be able to determine that than I would, so.
Felt that you get, you were given the general direction, that you've achieved your charge by having given conceptual and general direction.
Right, I think, I think they took the conceptual direction that we gave them through the public and kind of put feet to it, and I'm comfortable with it. You know, I might make a few tweaks here and there. I mean, we probably all would, but, you know, generally speaking, I think it's pretty clear. We heard from the public, we need more counseling, we need parent involvement, and that's all marked here.
Well, it is groundbreaking. I mean, we are doing a new thing here, so I wouldn't expect everybody to be up here and be in harmony. We have a couple more questions. Mrs. Alvey.
Yes, I mean, everything in the plan is important. I would have a hard time removing it, but I, when I, when I was asked for my three preferences, and those preferences I gave, I relied on the public, the public response, because I thought it was important that we follow kind of what the public was asking for primarily. And there are some things in here I know the public didn't ask for. For instance, when you say, "All our USD students need a safe and secure learning environment, facilities, and climate," well, there's a lot of facilities things built in here that I don't remember being on that parent list. But that's probably reasonable, because parents, when they're asked how a child is going to succeed, they don't usually think of air conditioning. We think of air conditioning, and we know how important it is, that we have facilities that work. But that's, that didn't come up, by the way, on any parent list. So I see what's happened is that you didn't take, what I thought was going to happen, the public list, and basically you didn't use it as a template. You just, you just tried to massage it into this format. So some of the things that the public wants are very strikingly represented, whereas other things that the public wants are less represented.
Was that because, Mr. Fine, I'm sorry, I don't want to answer for Mr. Fine.
I'm just asking, because...
Was it because you distilled some of those down into common themes? Is that what happened there?
So specifically to maintenance, and you'll even recall me making a comment at one of these meetings, that one of the things that we didn't hear about from you, back when you gave us input, was anything about maintenance.
Right.
We did hear from the public about maintenance, but we also, remember, it wasn't only the stakeholder input that we used. We used your input to us, we used the existing plans, one of which is the major maintenance plan. We used our experts, and we used the baseline data. And everything ultimately was governed by either your existing board goals or the eight state priority areas. And one of those eight state priority areas are our facilities being in good condition. And so that goes hand in hand with the major maintenance plan. And we did have public comment about, it wasn't a high frequency, I'd be the first to say, but there were public comments, in fact, we got quite a few from both staff and parents on facility conditions. And so we have one other element to all of that, and that is, the law requires us in the next year to restore back what today would be a little over a million dollars worth of maintenance funding, because that was a flexibility we were given to contribute less than the state wanted back in 2009. That flexibility ends in July of 2015. And so in part, we have to comply with that. In part, we were addressing, how are we going to fund, what you'll recall, just a couple weeks ago, Dr. Lewis and Orin Williams sharing here a $200 million facility maintenance need. How are we going to do that, really, with pennies a year?
I totally, I totally understand. I just, in terms of how to interpret the community input, I recognize you didn't just take those top...
Those 30 topics.
Thirty topics and make it into a plan. You also, as I said, you had to look at other things, like, for instance, I didn't remember that we had to pay back that facilities money. That would have been something, would have been good to know. So, you know, those are the things I, when I first looked at it, I said, I looked at and said, where does this plan depart from what the public needs?
So I, Mrs. Alvey, I also want to address the idea that we potentially had some idea, and then we shoehorned the public comments into that. It's actually just the opposite of what we did.
Okay.
Those 30 topics, to be very candid with you, your input to us was our number one focus of guiding focus. And we believed that to be appropriate, because you had looked at those 30 topics and put your own filters and your own perspective on them, and then gave us that input. That was our number one item. Our number two item was those 30 topics. And our number three item was, did we have any legal requirements on us? So in part, class size, although that was covered very well in the 30 topics, and was covered in your own comments to us. So we didn't have to, if you will, default to the legal piece of class size. On the maintenance, in some respects, we didn't even default to the legal piece on that, because that doesn't kick in till the second year, and we actually started in the first year trying to be responsive to needs, including two weeks ago when that South Chiller at Poly went dead when we were having 98, 99 degree weather. So those were our top three considerations. We then turned to the expert panels that we heard from, for any, for those nuggets that they gave us. We then turned to our instructional leaders, principals and others, and input they gave us with respect to nuggets in there. And we turned to the baseline data of where we are as a district with regard to the required metrics that the state now has us reporting on, and said, do these mesh, do they not mesh? But truly, the number one thing we looked and checked off was the input you all gave us, and the number two was, was the 30 topics that our stakeholders fed to us. We didn't, we then crafted things around that. We didn't try to shoehorn them in there. We know that ultimately, to make success, have success with regard to student performance, we have, we were on the right track. That's what Mrs. Cloud's comments at the last meeting, some of this doesn't look new. Well, I think we're on the right track. We just have to invest in it differently in order to get over the hump and to change some things. And then there are new things in here that we heard from our community.
Mr. Fine and Mrs. Alvey, you know, what I would like to see is, and I'm assuming you're going to put this in when you do your table contents and your forward and all that other stuff, that you will have a summary of the points of input, correct? Like a frontispiece or something that explains that?
Section one of the state template is, what was our engagement process, and how did it impact the plan?
Okay.
Truly, to Mrs. Alavy's point she just made, it's not in here. That's a section one of the state template. I actually have a, we have a draft of it, an outline of, it's got two sides. The left side is, what was the process we used? And the right side was, how did it influence us? So we know our process very well, because we've been through it. The right side comes at the end of the process, when we have the finished product to say, now we have to go back and check against it, to say, how did it influence it? Really, Mrs. Alavy's point and Mr. Lee's point.
That would be, it would be very helpful.
How you bridge those two together.
We have one more question from Mr. Hunt.
I suppose a lot of this comes down to, anytime we have co-governance under trust, I agree that we should have, I would like to see more options. And just to give you an example, Mr. Fine, we're reinstituting the funds for, like, science camp. When we've had discussions about, maybe there's other options in science camp. Science camp's gotten to be a pretty expensive venture over the last few years, we've talked about, unless you're going to make a face and say, no, I'm wrong. But anyhow, I'm going to, I know it's become for several families. I mean, Magnolia had a difficult time meeting it and all that.
Right.
I would like to see more options. I'm glad to see that you've got the grant writer back in here, and I'm taking somewhat on faith how that's going to be used on trust again, which I want to talk about a little bit later. But I don't see anything in here. We talk about expanding parent outreach, community outreach. I didn't see anything about a PIO nor bilingual, increasing our bilingual services. Did I miss that? Can you help me get to that?
So I just firmly believe, board members, that we need a full-time PIO, particularly with the way that our newspapers, new ownership is addressing the districts themselves. They were a good crutch to rely on, they're no longer there. And I think any plan that doesn't include full implementation of us getting this on television, on regular community access channels, is disingenuous. We need to make that commitment, and I would like to see this plan have the board...
We, we need to make that commitment, and I would like to see this plan, have the board discuss that option as, as well, because I believe it needs to be part of it. But go ahead, Mr. Fine.
So, two, two things to address.
Now, there is no PIO in here. In some respects, the district has staff with those responsibilities today, and so part of it may just be, we need to look at utilizing those resources, those current resources different. With respect to parent.
That's an option.
Sorry?
I said, that's an option.
Yeah.
Interrupted you, but go ahead.
With, with respect to, there's a whole need around the parent and community engagement that includes the establishment of a parent and partnership function in the district. It also includes one four-hour translator at every elementary school, something we don't have anywhere close to today. That's on page 36.
36.
That's fairly sizable, almost $900,000 to do that.
Seeing that, very good.
On page 25.
And, I'm sorry, Mrs.
There's a bilingual community liaison, page 25.
Yeah, for that one new department includes that. The other issue with regard to translation, Mr. Hunt, is, it's, it's hard to read, because it, one line of it's on 35, and the rest of it's on 36, it just got split, is, one of our most significant challenges is translating IEPs, and so we would add a full-time translator in special ed, just for that sole purpose alone, to stop pulling resources away from the school sites, which is how it gets done today.
Bilingual IEPs?
Pardon me?
Bilingual IEPs?
We, in order to communicate with a, a special ed parent, we ultimately translate the IEP into Spanish for them, as a service to them. And so that gets done today through kind of a lot, a lot of hardship. We, we bring resources in from the school sites to do that, which then takes that resource away from the school site. So between those two items, I think we will, we will cover translation needs in the district way beyond probably what we ever envisioned. We, well, we'll meet the need.
Good.
I, I think, in fact, I'm not even sure one four-hour at every school, elementary schools actually need it, but that was the metric we used, and we may need to change that around a little, where maybe it's not, no one at school A, but if they ever need something, they call upon school B, and there's more hours at school B, because there's more daily need for it at school B, as an example, something like that. But we, what we, the resource we put in here were 29 four-hour, 29 four-hour translators, plus the one, a whole new position in special ed. And you mentioned a third thing that I've now lost.
Does that qualify them for benefits?
At four hours, it doesn't qualify for, well, at four hours, yes, it qualifies for half of our contribution for benefits. But again, we could structure this any number of way, ways, in order to retain the employees. It may not make any sense to hire 29 half-time people. It may make more sense to hire, you know, 14 full-time people, and they split their time between two schools, type of thing.
This trustee would agree with that. I think we need to establish people in the community of ethnicity that, that can become familiar with, with our population base and scenarios and, and certain community sects and nuances. So I'd certainly like to see, and this board member would like to see it go that way.
And you mentioned a third thing that I've.
I'm just talking about television. I'm talking about public access, we're talking about able to reach the most amount of people. You know, it's, it's still, in this country at least, it's, it's still the cheapest. We know that everyone doesn't have internet, and we all like to brag about us being so internet, but it's still the television. Until we can do that, and if that, if our goal is to reach the maximum amount of parents and public, then still, to me, that is our, to this board member, this trustee, that is the key item that should be included.
Mr. Fine, can you take that and, and just consider that? And Mr. Hunt, I don't want to cut you off.
No, that's fine.
We have one more comment from Mrs. Alave before we go into closed session, but.
Actually, it's referencing Mr. Hunt's comment. I think that we, as a board, need to discuss that, and that it's not a, we should, we should not consider it as part of this plan. I think we need to, we, we, on many occasions, we've talked about the expenses related to putting in different kinds of equipment for tele, television, and I think that needs to have further discussion. I think that is something we need to discuss, and it's not something that directly results in the success of children in the district.
I would politely, just, I think we should discuss it. I don't understand where the money would come from otherwise, that's why I'm bringing it up now. I don't want it to, oh, we should have brought it up during that time, so.
I think, I think we will assign that to a committee, and we'll talk about that, because I do think we, as Mrs. Alave commented, it's not a done deal. All right, so, Mr. Fine, we need to get into closed session. I apologize, folks, we're running a little bit behind. We had a very important discussion up here today about our plan for the next three years. So, Mr. Fine, did you have any closing comments or anything else you'd like to say? Okay. Thank you very much. Before we go into closed session, I need to ask if there is anybody here in the audience that would wish to speak on any items that we're going to discuss in closed session. I didn't receive any speaker card, so I will assume no. All right, we're going to close open session, convene the close, open session. We'll try to be back by 5:30, 5:35, hopefully. Thank you.